I'm sorry, minutes of March 20th, are there any?
Minutes of April 3rd.
Oh yeah, April 3rd, I apologize, I was looking at the April 3rd agenda. Any corrections, add-ons, petitions? Okay, thank you Barbara.
You're welcome.
We have some rehires and new hires at the country club. Are there any questions on these? Alex, hey, for the community, Barbara?
Uh, yes it has, De Mary.
What are you looking at? And number three, we have new hires for the recreation department. Rehired for the, uh, the Bell Tofol League scorekeeper. A tennis assistant. For Alex and his tennis programs. We have a recommendation from the chief and deputy chief to assist with the night patrols. You guys had, uh, to have Jamie Madaco in charge of the night duty. Sort of calling the supervisor patrol, is that correct?
Yeah.
And you have to get that job description all tightened up and they were approved, they approved though. So you can share that with anybody who, uh, that 2350 is within the salary range for the other tenants and things. The fact being sure you're good, Jimmy's great at night. He's gonna help train, uh, the staff and bring them, everybody on the same page. Think Johnny is home, correct Barbara? He's had a lot of those.
Yes, I spoke to him, I spoke to him today as well. He's feeling well, everything was successful. I spoke to him as well. I don't have a date yet when he'll return.
Everybody's trained to, to relax, because he's, Johnny.
We had a concern with respect to race sidewalk that continues to crack and, I guess bulge is a good word too. It's outside of the shipyard and we're not sure, I think the, you know, the grocer's eliminated that. It's coming from that actual building in terms of their property, but it might be an underwater.
They believe it could be an underwater spring, but this is something that, that's why we need them in to get a definite. Because it is wet and slick all the time and there is some. It's, it's wet and slick constantly and there is some additional, um, material in the street. So we're assuming it's coming from underneath.
We need your help identify it before we repair it.
Before we can remedy. Correct. So I met Steve Gallagher there and we, he will repair the sidewalk, it can't be, he will just, you know, quick, a quick repair. You can't completely repave until it's, we get to the bottom of this.
Oh, the sign, I guess we, number six, we've come to, uh, I guess a consensus, right, on the signage, is that right? Yes?
Um, yes.
Okay. We're looking at number six.
Six.
And you have this document.
The DPW signage. Um, I, I'm still not, uh, strongly in support of that. I just feel that the, you know, speaking of residents, they don't often drive past the, um, the DPW building. And so the, I think having a signage information is something that we're looking into. But not, I, I just feel strongly about that that's not a location that's going to get the information to the majority of our residents.
Okay.
Kevin, how many, how many eyeballs are, would be on that sign outside of DPW?
Uh, so there's, there's thousands of eyeballs. Not speaking for Rebecca, but you might be referring to the fact that it might not be the Port Jefferson Village, so to speak, eyeballs. A hundred percent that would be, for example, down here, would be a difference. Either road is very well-traveled, that's for sure.
You were talking, I think originally the, it was eight point eight out in front of, eight point eight million outside of the village hall? If I'm remembering that number correctly, and two point two million outside of DPW?
Yeah, it was a big number, I would think, I would say it's somewhat subjective because it was from the sign company. But I'm gonna be very honest, you know, I'd rather get a dot, a dot number if we want real numbers, if, if it exists.
Okay.
It's, it's a lot, it's a lot of people passing over buildings.
And then you have people coming in going from the employers, the major employers of Stony Brook, St. Charles, at Mathers. School district, um.
You have, you know, Mount Sinai, Miller Place, Shoreham, people coming into town, definitely from the west end there for sure.
And what kind of announcements, are we just, we weren't just talking about announcements related to village residents. We're maybe talking about announcements that would help the village, um, you know, with emergency management.
Correct.
With, um, in terms of activities and events that we are encouraging people to, to return to the village to visit?
Sure, community news, community events, emergency situations, cleanup leaves, that's where we started. A lot of people weren't getting the online information, icy weather conditions, um, it's endless. And it's just gonna be communicated, communicated as well as the graphics that are put on. You know, the sign is an amazing sign.
Fire department, school districts, um, and businesses utilize these types of signs.
Yes, they do.
Now almost does it on a routine basis, no?
Well, let's just be clear, this sign, this type of signage is not permitted in our sign code, correct?
Correct.
For anyone else besides the village, yes.
Right, so, I mean, we wanna kind of follow.
Can we just quantify that, because the high school has it and the fire department.
They're exempt from having to, from the village.
Okay.
And the villages too, is that what it is?
Correct.
So municipal, state.
Well, well, yeah, education department controls what the, what the village, what the school is gonna do on its property. Fire district is exempt separately, taxing municipality. And under our village code, the village signs are exempt from the sign code. So that's how we get.
Right, we just wanna, I wanna, you know.
Otherwise it's prohibited, yes.
Right, okay. So, um. All right, got another question?
Yeah. My question's with regard to the price, um, we're talking about sixty-eight thousand.
We wanna stick on location before we jump to price. I just wanted, because you brought up a locational concern.
Yeah, and again, I know, I, I do not disagree at the, um, the spirit of it, which is to communicate my priority to our residents. But, you know, they're also letting non-residents know about, you know, village festivals, things like this. Um, I, I do agree that there are communication opportunities that the village can continue looking into. I know we talked about, um, these, sort of the electronic kiosks, or, you know, informational kiosks. I think we got a grant for, or we've applied for a grant for, for kiosks downtown somewhere. And then said, well, maybe if we can sort of upgrade and looking at some kind of electronic option there. So that we can have, you know, an in-house graphic designer putting something aesthetically pleasing and more readily updated than printing and running out and posting, you know, something. You know, catching up with, you know, technology and then using it to our residents' advantages. So I do, I don't disagree fundamentally with the effort, I just don't know that, yeah, spending over sixty thousand dollars for something off the DPW is, is the right execution of it.
So, I'm gonna go back to location, is there another location on village property where you think the sign is more, I mean?
I, I mean, I know we, we talked about in front of village hall and said, you know, the electronic aspect of it is incongruous with the historical nature. You know, and then started kind of talking, you know, and then DPW came up and I feel like the train went in that direction. But as, as a village, as, you know, communications, um, efforts go, finding out where is it that the majority of our residents pass by? That would be palatable to have an electronic sign. Like, I don't know that we've really done that, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, if we've really reached out to the residents and said, you know, where, um, you know, where do you, you know, pick a couple places, where do you pass by, where do you, you know?
Well, there's, there are different gateways, right? So you would have an uptown gateway, you have the east and west gateways. You have the three-way intersection gateway. But, you know, we, we, I think there was extensive work done to present the idea. We all think it's a great idea in terms of getting a community message out in timely manner. And we worked on design, right, Kevin? We went back and forth with them on the display.
Good.
And I, and I don't think we're, we're concerned about price as much as, because we're just coming from the ARPA funds. So, I mean, um, so we're just trying to figure out, is that, is that the best location?
So I'm not, I'm not there.
Okay.
I'm not there, um, yes, we have the ARPA funds, but there are a lot of other projects that we could probably use the ARPA funds for as well. And seventy thousand dollars for one sign, it's a lot of money. So I'm not completely sold on it, location, um, I like the DPW location, I like the, um, the uptown gateway location. I, I don't know about traffic studies and where most people enter the village, but I know 112 is a very busy location. So that would be my suggestion as a second location to look at potentially.
I'd like to comment on that.
Wait, wait, what, where's your second location?
The gateway on 112, up near.
Countdown.
Where the gateway sign is. Just because there's a lot of traffic there.
Digital sign there.
I just feel a digital sign that's not on the property that's being represented by the messages that are going out spells billboard to me. I didn't think this community wanted to spell billboard. I thought we wanted to spell classy communication.
Yeah.
We, there's obviously trepidation about this, and I get that. It's happening all over the place. We have, we're going to adopt this sooner or later, there's no doubt about it, because we're here. The technology is such that, you know, fifty-nine thousand dollars for a sign, but please, as I said when I first presented this, you know, break that over ten years. Because the messaging is, it's limitless. It, it changes every eight seconds if you want it to.
But in ten years, is the technology gonna be developed?
Four K's four K, I mean, ten years from now, four K's gonna look just as beautiful.
Five, six, seven, eight K, I mean, at what point?
No, four K's for the eye, I'm looking at you in four K now.
At what point is the school sign, you know, they put, I don't know how many thousands of dollars into that sign and everybody refers to it as, well, that's all technology. At what point, I mean, we're not talking ten thousand dollars, we're talking seventy thousand dollars.
Yep.
That we have a lot of things and projects, you know, that we could spend that money on, not saying that I'm not in favor of this, I'm in favor of the communication and the concept, but.
I'm not actually pushing this, I, but I, I feel compelled to give you all the facts about this and what the other funds could be used for is a very valid thing. I don't know those things, what, you know, we should go through that list.
Can I ask a question, Barbara? We, we learned, um, that little tiny strip of property between, as you're coming down Route 112, or maybe Baba knows the answer. You're coming down Route 112, you got that tiny little strip of property, right, and the ferry comes out.
Mm-hmm.
Is that ours?
That's our property, that, I've always believed it was village property.
Yeah, I think that's our property, that, that little strip, so you, you will see it coming off the ferry, it'd be like right in front of you, coming off the ferry. And as you're coming down Route 112, you'd see it right, like, at the three ways, you make a right or left. I mean, can we explore that location?
No.
The one where the New York State signs?
Yeah, well, coming down Main Street, right?
Where the Cuomo debacle went, that big, large sign that he took down?
We had to take Cuomo's sign down.
Is that what we're speaking about?
Yeah, but coming down.
Then you'd only need one-sided, because it would be flat, right?
Well, you're coming down Main Street, you're looking at the sign, right?
Right.
And the people who are visiting can also see the sign, right?
But it wouldn't be two-sided, because it would be, as you're going straight down, it would be perpendicular to West and East Broadway?
Facing, it would be facing, it would be facing Main Street going up and facing the ferry side. Or, or the other way around, if you wanna do it the other way around.
It's already confusing with that, that stuff, sorry.
Sorry.
It doesn't have to be.
I'm just trying to get, get in more highly trafficked locations, never up on Heart Country Road.
Does the, uh, does the price change depending on where we put this sign?
Not so much, but what you just described to me would be a single-sided sign, so the price would change.
Single.
What you just described.
Well, unless, if you didn't want the ferry people to see, you know, commuters to see the back of the sign.
Right.
But if it's a single-facing sign coming down Route 112, then there's your sign.
I don't know, it feels like a billboard, a little bit?
Yeah.
Versus a, versus a community relations and communications tool?
Yeah, this could, this opens up to everything, you know, then it's communal billboard.
The estimate that you got from Wells Bank, that's for, up the highway, correct?
Yes, eleven thousand to run electricity.
For the electric.
So it could be considerably different?
A lot of money.
If electricity was there, you mean?
If we chose, if there was. There's electricity in the building and in the street, right? There ain't a line from the.
I just think that's an awful lot of money for a sign.
And the, what was the board's, uh, feeling on, on in front of village hall? Is that sort of a universal? I know we all kind of paused and hesitated and then went DPW.
Because I think we all like, like the idea and the, uh, the, the, the ability to do a lot of messaging, you know, for economic development, community and, and leaf retention and all that other stuff that's happening, you know? But I think we were just concerned about having this kind of like TV signage outside of village hall. I mean, I'm, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm, I'm really sold on it enough to say, yeah, put it in front of village hall. But, you know, listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and help bring a consensus decision here, because maybe we can ask you guys, well.
There was, there was conversation of the parking lot coming off of Barnum into, into the village. Most of us as residents are trapped, are up and down that road every day.
Coming into like Rocketship Park on Barnum.
And that's also residential location, there are a lot of people who live on Barnum that may not want to see a, a street or, or a billboard signage on their, on their street.
Putting it in front of village hall is everything that the ARC is trying to fight in this village. We are in historical village.
I wasn't suggesting to put it in front of village hall, I'm sort of agreeing that would be a great compromise to put it in front of.
I'm just saying, I'm just trying to say. And most people in this village don't even like the sign at the high school.
Well, actually, hold on. And I spoke, I did speak to, um, some historical society people and so was the garden people and they just like, oh.
Okay, so thank you for that.
Gerard makes up a good point, um, why, what about sending this concept to the ARC for, because they do look at signage throughout the village? And seeing what the ARC as a body would recommend, just like the planning board sends items to the ARC.
That's a good idea.
I, I would like to do that.
Okay.
I wanted to comment on two things, if I may.
Sure. Absolutely.
The price of the sign shocked me at first, until I went to our, we have an amazing sign maker here, display makers, we work with them all the time. And his price was forty-eight thousand. And it's a, it's a one-off for them, they just don't do this kind of thing. I trust them, I think they could do it, but watch fire, they're in Patro, by the way, I don't know if you know that, Brian?
Yep.
They're just, it's like the top, you know, in warranty, in the look, in what they do. So I just wanna make that clear. If you get a local sign maker, it's gonna be forty-eight thousand, the best in the industry's gonna be fifty-nine thousand. That's kind of how I look at things, so this, it's shocking at first, but when you give it ten years and all the messaging, it's not shocking at all. It's monthly, like less than a thousand dollars a month. So I just wanted to say that, I also wanna say historically, we used to have this little room where we bought pictures, eight by tens, and now, pretty soon, we're gonna be doing digitals online and buying these pictures online. And just, just things evolve, and we could, we could have some great historical things on this sign that we haven't even thought about. And I would bring that to the attention of the historical society as well.
Is there any?
I'm just gonna recognize Kelly.
Just a quick question about the electricity, is there any way, depending on what location, to add a solar element so that you can save the village?
Oh yeah, we talked a little bit about that, but it changes the whole, it's gotta have a cap on it and it just, it makes it much more even uglier. Sorry.
I guess unless we go.
Less attractive.
Unless we go kiosk with it as opposed to sort of, um.
So the grant that we got from Suffolk County Community Development, um, we don't have contracts yet from Suffolk County for any of the grants that we've been waiting for for three or four years. So that, that is exactly what it's for, but I think that grant was maybe for like, I don't even remember, like sixty grand or something, it's not even, that wouldn't even cover one sign at this point, you know? So, um, but, you know, so that, I don't foresee that grant coming forward in, for a while, but.
But we were granted it?
Yeah, we were awarded the grant, the Chamber of Commerce put it in, in conjunction with the village.
Is that something Nicole would be asking down for?
Well, no, Barbara calls and Denise calls, they call Suffolk County to see if any of the other grants are ready.
We still don't have our contract for Harper from Popple Place.
Oh.
And the Rocketship Park walkways, which we got like two thousand seventeen or eighteen. So, um, yes, Gerard, this is.
Is there any information out there on how much money would actually save us in advertising?
I don't know, but I, I made, I made the comparison, you know, with a, by TBR, a TBR full page ad and, and what we could do with this. And I think it's, it becomes very attractive in that regard. So, uh, I'm not saying this would replace other forms of advertising, it could, it could, it's possible, it's a good point.
Kathleen, one more comment, please.
As I see it, I think I'd rather see money spent on revitalizing the website to make that so much clearer on giving out information. Than to have it flashing in front of the village hall. And does it mean I'm gonna stand there now and drive by and now read? Am I gonna read everything that's going, that's what it's like, is it really benefit, how much can be written on that sign?
Well, you know, I'm.
Yeah, so the old signs, LEDs, remember the red signs where you did have to read it, like it was called the crawl? These are such that they're so graphical that you just, you get the message, we read by icons, you're in the advertising business, you know what I'm speaking about. So it's, it's really a picture, an icon, and a word or two, it's, it's not something that somebody really has to sit and read. And it changes throughout the day, so we all know what we see every day. It's not unlike the banners that are up at the freeway.
I'm just worried about the website, if I may.
Sure.
So this sign was actually designed and developed as an alternative to, for people who do not digitally access information. Either through email, website, social media, people who don't access that type of, the type of information we are trying to convey using digital means. So, and there are quite a significant number of them in, in the village of Port Jefferson.
All right, so we're gonna, at number six, I think the consensus is we're gonna refer to the ARC. We're gonna give you a tough call. Ed? Go back and figure out, and again, I think we're, we're not so much concerned about the look and feel of it, but where, where are they, it would be best suited, could be replaced by village, I mean, is that, is that the?
I think the look and feel has something to do with it, because depending on where it goes, the look and feel will have to go along with that. I think, I don't think we're having consensus at all, put it in front of village hall, but just as a discussion, um, if it were in village hall, I think it would look much different than if it were on the, you know, far outskirts with, where there's no residential or no, you know, historic significance. So I think that has an, there's an aspect to that. But let's, let's see what the brainstorm has to say there.
Number seven is an arrangement that came about, I guess as a result of a, a program provider that we had a long history with at the village center. And, um, her wanting preferred rates while having access to rooms that are not available at times of day. Where we could, you know, offer her, um, a contractual arrangement in return for a guaranteed set of hours. So it's, she provides fitness classes for seniors at this time, it was at nine ten, three days a week.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine to eleven.
Very strong following, um, she, they were using the sale off room, which we are getting back into now, you know, uh, putting the building back into more of a demand. Where there are other not-for-profits coming in and also looking to rent that room for the, the regular rate. And so we couldn't, we couldn't, we tried to figure out a situation, we actually made arrangements for her to go into what's known as the skipjack room. This is the room where the before and after day school program comes, the kids come in the morning, and they get on the bus and they go to school. Uh, we're gonna carpet this room and allow the seniors to exercise in that room. That room was not being used during the daytime as much, and they're not bouncing around the building, so they now have a new home. And, uh, the other agreement is that the program will be a, a partnered program, so it's a Port Jeff- Jefferson fitness program. Because of a, a large percentage of the people who were participating in the program were village residents, so we're trying to accommodate this senior group of individuals who kind of banded together and stayed banded through COVID. And it's kind of like they're, they're really, they feel very closely about their association, so we don't wanna, um, but I think we made it work for everybody. This program brings in over ninety thousand dollars a year revenue to the, to the village and the recreation center. And we, and we're keeping them in the building and utilizing a room that otherwise isn't utilized during that off time. So I think we created a new situation and what was becoming a unraveled problem.
Does this set any precedent regarding the future, through this summer's discussions about the rate that we'll be charging to the, like this?
It falls right into the same area. You know, if you do the hourly, she's getting, she's not getting any more preferential treatment than any of the other not-for-profits or organizations.
Okay.
So that, there was a, there was a floor and a ceiling. The contract rate and the ceiling of what we're already giving off the profit. It was a kind of, that's what the best we can do, if you can't live with that, then take your program.
And that's the, the reduced rate that I'm proposing right now?
Yeah.
Is what she's getting?
So, what, the only difference is, this is one room, LIFIS is renting more than one room in the building. So they need this room in the afternoon, they also use the upstairs room for homework and other, other programs, so they.
Apples to orange.
So, yeah, basically.
And, but this is not a not-for-profit, correct?
Correct, but it's the only person that uses the room or is making a commitment to the village for use of a room on a long-term contractual basis. So, so otherwise she would have had to rent the room for fifty dollars an hour and she would have gotten the ability to go back into the sale off room. But there are other people in competition, she wanted a break on that room and we couldn't do that. So we said, listen, this room is not being utilized, you know, you're gonna commit to this number of hours, and that's why it's actually a contract and it's not. It has a different feel than a program that leads to, under the usual dynamic, which is, you know, the ten ninety-nine situation with the program provider. Right, and that's usually how we run our programs.
So, just, um, so are we going to establish this going forward as a model, sort of?
I could become the basis for model, because again, I don't think there's any other one organization that's making a commitment other than LIFIS. And, uh, this exercise program to rent rooms from us on a long-term basis, guaranteeing nine thousand dollars.
Can be poly?
Well, you know, I don't know, if they come to us, they ask. Right now, they're paying the fifty dollars. They're paying the full rate.
Full rate.
Yeah.
For the sale off room.
But that room's in high demand. Yeah.
Can I just have one comment?
It's not really a.
No, it's not really a public comment session.
Then how do we pick and choose when we can have a comment?
Because I asked you, because I asked your, I asked your opinion on the sign.
Okay, so how about asking my opinion?
Okay, Gerard, how you feel about this?
I, I, as a former member of the Parks and Rec, I think it's a great idea. The only thing is, it was brought up in our meeting many times, that the idea of carpeting that room for other programs is just a disaster in the making. So that's the only thing that I object to, is the carpet of the.
Okay, actually, it was the rec, the manager of the building's recommendation that she felt that the carpet and an industrial kind of carpet would serve well for that space. Because the other surface was becoming hard to maintain.
I could go into this for half an hour, Gerard, about the issues with the carpeting and the glue and the, does, does it pull up off the floor? And is it a good idea to keep carpeting and glue on the floor? And is it gonna be easy to take up and you'll have to retitle the floor if you carpet up when it gets, when it gets worn out? It's five thousand dollars, a good investment, so, I mean, I had nothing to do with the arrangement, so it's like, it was, it was me.
We were gonna lose a longstanding program that thirty-five women who are residents of this village want, have taken for years. And I know we had issues with the program director, but the answer was not to not have them here and then have no program in the, in the building, you know, they, they.
It wasn't determined that the person could not run the program, it was just determined that the person could run the program for fifty dollars an hour in the sale off room.
They would all follow her up.
Can I just make a suggestion on the carpet? I've seen facilities use carpet tiles, that if there's an issue with one tile or there's a stain or a hole, that tile can be pulled up and another carpet tile pulled down. So it's not a wall-to-wall system, I don't know if that can be used for industrial use, I'm imagining it can, I know it's been used in office spaces. I don't know the price, but something we can look into.
Carpets installed, carpets installed.
It's installed.
What happens?
By the way, somebody who comes to provide us with a revenue service. I, we, the mayor has authority to enter into that agreement.
Yes, you could rent out those spaces, yeah, manage the real property, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. What, Fire Dukes, always a street for village, we're set with location even though, you know what the tide is doing that day?
Grouchy was down there, they already met, they had the site visit, so, well, I don't know the answer to that question, I'm sure they took all that into account. Oh, okay, there you go.
I'm sure we're good on that.
Yeah, they were, they, they site visited, so.
Alright, so part of the big celebrations budget that we have.
Fourth of July fireworks on the third of July, just to clarify.
Correct. Make sure the contract says July third, yes and done.
Yes.
Okay, and the fire department then of course comes the next morning with their permit for a parade, which was an interesting discussion I had today. And Barbara, do I have that or do you have it?
What?
The application for the permit, the fire department parade, you're asking us to approve that?
He sent a letter yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, you have, what, what permit do you have?
No, the fire department doesn't make a formal application?
Oh.
For a permit every year?
They always send a letter, I can have.
I thought they did already.
Christian.
No.
It came yesterday.
I mean, the letter saying they're.
The invite that they're having it and they distribute it and they tell, yes, yes, they let you know the logistics of the day and stuff, yeah.
Okay. These, any, anything standing out in the warrants as presented?
No, just the trust account, Brian was about, we had to return money to a bond, that's why that account's so big. It's a new property owner, yes.
Yep, that was an outstanding property project.
Which one?
Twelve Thirty Station, right, is that what the address was?
I know about the developer's name, Spiliotis.
Yeah, it was Spiliotis, now it's. Heinle, Mine Hill. Yeah, Heinle.
So basically, Spiliotis posted a bond when he went for initial approval.
Correct.
Project was taken over.
By a new developer.
Who has posted bond with us.
Correct, it was assigned to them. And now he's into a, the full project bond, set up at a planning board for four hundred something, so this preliminary bond can be released.
Okay, Rachel, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. You know, somebody, the trust accounts use for project bonds and also for, you know, smaller things, so one eighty-six was.
Yeah, we held it for, held it for a while.
One addition to the agenda?
Yep. Yes, please.
As I ran around, we got this, this email with this proposal from PW Grocer for grant writing assistance about an hour before the meeting. And the grant that we'd be applying for is through the NIPW, the National Wildlife and Fish Service Foundation rather. And so they, essentially the country club, Stan and I have been working with the staff at the country club to look at the possibility of creating a pond system that collects stormwater off of the smoothway, which runs right next to the pump house of the, you know, that currently irrigates the, the country club property. And in light of the, having reached the ten million gallon pumping limit last year and not being able to keep the grounds watered as necessary for, for a golf course, we began discussions on how to reclaim stormwater and use this more sustainable method moving forward to water the greens and capture a resource that we already have coming through right next to, to the property. We've been, we've been looking at this, you know, for, for a number of months now and finally getting to the, the phase where we'd be looking at a grant for the, for the design of these, of this pond system. And we're in discussion with PW Grocer for that. I asked, you know, we, I asked them to look at possible grants for this project.
And would stand on this, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's what I said.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
No, I just.
It's okay, I'm just gonna add on to it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Do it, you wanna?
No, go. No, keep going.
Okay, tag, tag, you're it.
No, no.
Just, just to add on to what Rebecca was reporting. Tomorrow, we're having the golf course architect come up, the guy who did the redesign at the golf course, to pick a location, a potential location for any pond or ponds that will go in. And on Thursday morning, we are actually meeting with Grocer onsite, Brian and Chris?
Either, no, it's a gal.
To, to figure out a way if we can potentially capture that water that goes down that concrete smoothway that runs between Old Homestead and the golf course. That water all goes down and goes under Old Homestead and goes down into the washout that we just repaired. We'd like to capture that water if we can. We have had contact and discussions with DEC. They have no jurisdiction over ponds on the golf course. So if this, if this can happen, it's going to be a major plus for us. It's also a plus for the environment, capturing our own water, reusing it to irrigate the golf course. So hopefully we can move forward with it.
Yeah, so the.
You have the document, right?
Yeah, so the resolution in question would be to approve the proposal for PW Grocer for grant writing services for the design and planning of a stormwater retention pond system on Port Jefferson Village Country Club Parkland. And this would be an important part contingent on a positive reply from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation granting agency saying that this is a, you know, essentially PW Grocer inquired about the viability of the grant application, which is common to, to do, to make sure that someone doesn't go through a whole grant application process when the granting agency.
So, okay, I'm getting a little confused, so, so the proposal from PW Grocer is to represent the village in a granting opportunity or to help us design a pond?
To represent the village in a granting opportunity and the grant would cover the funds, the, the fee to design the pond for shovel-ready plans for the pond. So the PW Grocer estimates that it would be eighty to a hundred thousand dollars to design, create designs, do all that work. They've put forth a quote of eighteen thousand dollars for the grant preparation. There's another grant by the Long Island.
So, I'm sorry, so the grant, in the grant preparation, is the pond have to be designed or is it just the concept of this and the grant?
Just the concept, so there's information that they would, and I, and I had this discussion too, and I thought that they added an extra zero to, you know, to the, to the fee. So in, again, I wanted to bring this to the board to discuss. The other component of this is that through the Long Island Resilience Fund, I think it's by Long Island Sound, they currently have a grant writing reimbursement grant, so a grant to write, for a grant, which is reimbursed between five thousand and just under ten thousand dollars per grant. And so the other question that we have out is if this is a candidate, which I'm confident it is, and so then it would just cost the village or, I'm being told it would be the country club's fund closer to eight and a half thousand dollars to go for a grant for between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, can I, can I?
Sure.
Did anybody have some?
I have a question.
Please.
And asked it earlier when Rebecca swung by and presented this document just before the meeting started, which was, we have a grant writer sort of on call. We pay a grant writer, I think, what do we budget for the grant writer?
It's usually twenty-five hundred a month.
Twenty-five hundred a month?
But hourly as used, right?
Yeah, it's good, it's anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five hundred.
Retainer, and so I, I a hundred percent think that the idea of the pond is worthy and justifiable. The, the grant writing by the organization that is writing a grant to the contracted provider. And, and it's iffy, even because you have to win the grant too. I, I just feel like if we're, if we're making a decision tonight on, on putting this on as an add-on for the consent agenda, that it's because of the deadline of that grant. And maybe we should ask our grant writer to actually put some emphasis on this particular grant and work with whomever, you know, she needs to work with to try and, and make it happen by the deadline. Then we don't have to expend that money or worry about getting another grant to pay for the grant.
Sure, and I would look to the mayor for, you know, or Denise or Barbara, anyone to clarify what the current status of, like if Nicole would be able to pick up a ball and sprint with it right now.
My understanding is she's been pretty backlogged.
Yes.
Well, she's in Albany too, she's got a.
She has a full-time position.
This is an issue with us, Nicole, her time is very, becoming more and more and more limited to us, so. We're hoping, I'm sorry, we just want her to focus on grant administration of all and the money that's still outstanding for the projects that we finish, so. We're not really sure we're gonna be using her for writing more grants unfortunately, so we are looking for a grant writer, by the way, so. I just have a, I just, I'm sorry, Kathy, did you?
I would just, I can kind of answer the question, how much, many hours she's been billing us the last couple of months?
I can look it up.
Have we been using the twenty-five hundred?
Anywhere from eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred, it's been averaging.
So she's pretty much at her level with the work she's being done?
So my, I'm just a little confused, cause I wanna move forward with this, and I think Grocer, cause they did the stormwater runoff and they're the best people to, you know, dedicate that, that underlying study that they only did for the village and they did a recharge basis as well. They're charging us eighteen thousand just to submit this stuff or to, or are they gonna do current irrigation, water use practices, hydrological calculations and watershed evaluations?
That's what the eighty to a hundred thousand would be.
So I don't understand what we're paying eighteen thousand for.
For them to, to get all the, and listen, I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
So organizational information is the IN number, letters of support, funding source, funding commitments, matching contributions, IRS form nine ninety. And you could get that from the treasurer's office now.
I think we're jumping a little bit ahead. What we're, what we're trying to find out tomorrow and Thursday is can, can we do it?
Understand that.
Grocer's, Grocer's gonna come and look at it and can we do it and then maybe we can go forward with.
And the only reason, as I shared, that I brought this to today's meeting is that there is a May fifteenth deadline for the grant. If there's another grant writer that we can engage with this and we don't have to make a decision right now, obviously. And then two, it's my understanding if we, if we do decide to move forward with the resolution, we don't necessarily have to engage with a contract. It would just be there in case we do decide in the next week that we don't have any other options. And again, I'm bringing the information to the table and the board and.
So if it's.
All of this stuff? Is it more than eighteen thousand?
I don't think so.
No.
If it is, then it's worth, it's a deal. But it's saying, Rebecca's saying that's what they're making a grant application for, for all that stuff to be done.
Maybe it's so expensive because they know half of that's gonna be reimbursed by grant.
No, they didn't, I didn't tell them that first.
I don't know.
I don't know how you guys want me to move forward on this, cause it's. Brian, you wanna look at this?
Yeah, I'll look. Yeah, thanks. I do think that it seems expensive from the scope of work, if it's just a grant application.
I mean, it doesn't appear to me that that second paragraph or bullet.
No.
Set of bullets is, is the, what they're trying to put together for eighteen grand.
No, I called and there was a quiet moment on the phone.
That's not.
You know, so, and again, I don't know if someone wants to call and try to negotiate it or find out more. I just, I don't know if this, if today's the deadline that the board would have to pass for some engagement. And if this is something that the mayor or the country club or someone else can.
So if, I would love for them to come back after your visit with them at the country club with a more, another proposal that provides a better scope of work.
Okay, and that's something.
Yeah, and if they can, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it looks like it's just the, the front part of this and the next is the grant, that's the longer term work. But it does say to question for form, this task would be a lump sum of eighteen thousand. Never keen on lump sums with professionals anyway.
No.
But, you know, maybe a quick call to Brian Hefflick might explain that.
I, no, I called.
Oh.
Yeah, that was like on my way down here and it was just, he was like, yeah.
That's the answer.
That's, that's, you know, so again, I don't, I just wanted to bring all that information here because the grant could be substantial. But if there's another way also to not have to pass something tonight, that's the other question I have. Is there, you know, in a week, is there ability for?
Yeah, if you can, if they can fine tune this and then present it back, we can take an electronic vote and then bootstraps and suspenders at the next board meeting, give them authorization.
To round the vote.
Is the board comfortable with that?
Much more comfortable with that.
Well, I was just doing some numbers, just to give you an idea and some perspective, cause I like to see things. Using Nicole's hourly rate, that would equal a hundred and twenty-eight hours of work.
Yeah.
Right, no, and, 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 listen, I'm not coming here being like, oh, we're too enthusiastic about this.
They need to come back to us with something more, we just can't, that's not.
Okay, and I'll, I'll send that feedback back and, you know, we do have the option of electronic vote, should we send something out that is palatable and functional and logical, then we'll take it from there, so I'll, I'll work with Stan to continue. There you go, there you go, we'll take him out and go.
So there was not a number eleven?
No.
Alright, now motion to approve one through ten.
Well, we tabled six.
Did we table six?
Tabled six to refer to the ARC.
Yes.
Can I just have a quick question about the James Murdock?
Yeah.
Will he be doing that in addition to his daytime job?
Yeah, he's already a code enforcement officer on duty with us.
It's a promoter, it's a promotion from within, from the current position as a code officer, as part of.
Yeah, he's working.
Yeah. That was, that's exactly my question, so he's working full-time in the investigation role, right? For code investigations now?
Yeah, the building and planning department.
For the building and planning department, investigating for the building. And then this is a promotion for his second role with the village to become a supervisor.
Correct, yes.
On the off-out, like how many hours is it?
He's part-time, he's part-time, so twenty hours, twenty hours, no more than twenty hours a week, cause he's part-time code bureau, like all the code offices.
Eighty or sixteen point two five?
Twenty. Yeah, all the code offices work twenty hours.
He's already on two shifts.
He works Thursdays and Fridays currently.
So it's not in addition to that, it's replacing that.
Right, so I can train, he needs to train them, train the chef on how to operate and call in and, you know, things that the former chief would be doing. And Johnny and Charlie are just not there. So in the, in the interim, are you gonna keep an update on, is part of your report, do you have an update?
On the point.
Where you're, where at with the?
Where you have interviews.
We have interviews scheduled next week.
Oh, okay.
Done one, right, one.
Yes.
Nobody knows what you're talking about.
The chief interviews, they're scheduled for next week.
To rehire.
To replace a chief, yes.
I have it in my report, but there's nothing in the report because they're scheduled. They haven't done any, they're scheduled.
No, I just, I didn't wanna, I don't wanna report on it, she was planning on.
Just report on what the prog, progress has been, if they, like we hosted the job and we're doing interviews and.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, so again, motion as presented to approve one through tens, six being referred to the ARC. There's a second, trust you louds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I do have to leave at six thirty, so I just wanted to, Brian, I think, and Rich, thanks for coming. I think that there's just a lot of confusion on the, I don't know, the documents that we provided in preparation for the May first hearing. I'm gonna make a recommendation that the board either tries to convene and do a work session on this or we have more information about it or before we have a public hearing so that we can be more clear. We're asked, we're being asked to make a modification to a code that, you know, we, I think we really need to discuss ourselves before we bring it to the public, so how do you feel about that?
It's fine, you know, I'm probably good with it. It's just really the, the goal of legislation is to try to provide a path where the preservation of that building is viable and just doesn't end up in its demolition, that's really the key. So it is definitely more the art of legislation as opposed to the science of development.
Okay, so in the, in, for what I think was being explained to me, there's, it's in a certain zone, but it also gives reference to being able to point to another zone and it's very confusing, the way our code is written, are you, is this supposed to be clearing that up as well for us or?
It does make it clear that it's a conditional use, that, that you can't have residential prop, you can't, in that zone, you can't have residential development. So what this does is it makes residential multifamily residences a conditional use in that property with a special permit from this board. It keeps completely intact the authority and jurisdiction of the planning board to make any rulings on a formal site plan once that comes. All it does is it adds an additional step to come to the board, this board, to say, one, is it worthy of a special permit that you can have residential development, multifamily on that property? Like the answer logically, legally, from an Article seventy-eight defense standpoint is yes. Like, the answer logically, legally, from an Article seventy-eight defense standpoint is yes, because behind that is, Cross Street is the hospital, behind that is Canyon Creek, and when I say behind it, I mean just close behind it, adjoining property line. And the Cross Street.
Princess Street Court.
Right, it's all right there, so, it is multifamily.
But the key, the thing that's triggering this is the historic building, is that right?
Correct, correct, to, to, the goal, the village's goal to try to, to try to adaptively reuse that building. Otherwise, we could just not go through this exercise, and then a developer can decide what they're going to do with that property, which could include the demolition of that structure. As of right.
But, well, because RM is already, the PO already points to RM as a conditional use, and they can do dense housing, so.
Correct. Correct.
Right, that's, that's, that's.
Correct, and, and what, and what the goal of legislation is, and again, this is something we probably, as a general way, um, is to, if the property, so you can't spot zone, right? Spot zone is illegal in New York. If, uh, so you can't just say, I'm going to take this and apply it just to this project, so, I, I don't want to burden the discussion with, what's the concept, what's happening? Yes, it's happening in a vacuum, but it's really not happening in a vacuum, but we're not spot zoning, so, so how do you, how do you say, how do you say preserve this building, but make it general enough that it can apply to other potential RM locations? And.
Or, or can it be other, other locations that are historic?
Correct, well, if they're in the PO and RM zones, yes.
Okay.
So, we provide a preface to the legislation to say, if the application comes in, and it is of, I don't want to mis-cord it, I want to get the language exactly right, it is, uh, preserves, it has, if the property has, again, this is going to be in a board of trustees' opinion, if they want to enter the special permit. Whether the property has certain, it has proposed for development, and it's used for institutional residential purposes, and contributes to the unique architectural and aesthetic character of the village, and that the village wishes to encourage the retention and adaptive reuse of these properties in a manner that pres- protects, preserves, and enhances architectural and aesthetic character. This board has to be convinced that that standard for whatever this property might be, this one or others, um, would qualify to trigger this lessening or loosening of the standards to allow that building to be reused, and prevent it from being demolished. That's the goal.
I think it's a great idea to have a workshop on this, so that we can really all look at the components, there's many, um, yeah, I personally have concerns about a few of the, uh, sort of carrots that are being offered, but ideas about other things that, you know, we can, um, uh, have as aspects of this, and I'm sure that the other trustees, uh, you know, would, would have their own ideas, and, um, you know, sort of like you're saying, the magic of legislation is getting folks around the table and having these discussions.
Fine, I personally would like to see if we can't do a, um, maybe a field trip there, just to really see what that building looks like inside and out, and.
Definitely, I, I think that's a great idea, I walked the property today, and I was, uh, very surprised, and I did it with the eye towards the historical building, obviously, as a history buff and having thought the distance, to make sure we had the right criterias. But really, what was amazing to me was the lack of forestry, lack of trees, it's deceptive what that looks like when you're on the property, because when you're off the property, it's astounding, like you'd say, wow, that's a completely wooded parcel. But when you're on it, look on the satellite, but even more so, look when you're on it, all of those trees are on undevelopable slopes, right? So all the slopes, the very, it's a very interesting parcel, it's, again, this, I preface this with, I am not talking just about this lot, right? This is going to be a general application statute for this, the zoning code, but, uh, that being said, this parcel in particular, which is not what this is angled towards, is very flat across the top, and virtually completely developed. There are multiple buildings all over the property, there's the big building, there's an enormous extension off the back of that, of the ma- main Mary Haven Historical Building. It is all parking lot, and all the trees that you see are the undevelopable slopes, so they, it, it's interesting to see the fence line at the very crest of the, of the hills, of the slopes as you go over, and then the trees lining that, but on the top, a couple of nice specimens, but on parking lot islands. Yeah, it's clear.
And, and so it's at, uh, in a rough calculation, it's already at sixty-seven percent clearance, um, which is in PO, sixty-five percent is the limit, and so to clear any more, uh, which the current draft proposes clearing up to fifty percent more trees than are already cleared, um, that, you know, that's one of the concerning aspects.
About fifty percent more, five percent more, like, it, it loosens the time from sixty-five to fifty-five.
Um, I, I think it says existing plus up to fifty percent more.
Yeah, that's how I read it.
Existing cleared plus no more than fifty percent of existing unclear, yeah, no, that's correct, yes.
That's alarming.
Yeah.
Wait, what does it mean?
It said, it says, existing cleared area, plus no more than fifty percent of existing uncleared area.
Oh, so it would be fifty percent of the uncleared area.
Of what remains, correct.
So if we want to create an incentive to keep the building, because the main building is really a landmark, there's other ways of providing.
Yes, I mean, I mean, that, that's one of the things that could be debated, and voted upon on, on whether it should be a lesser number, should it be existing plus twenty-five, should it be existing plus some other calculation?
Existing plus zero.
Well, this particular lot is, there's, there's.
They should take down the landmark building, which, you know.
This, this particular lot, as you said, they wouldn't have any reason to clear slopes.
Correct.
But moving forward, like we said, it's not just for this particular lot, there could be one where there's a significant amount of, of trees, and you wouldn't want to see necessarily fifty percent more.
Right, because a historic building, say, needs additional parking to make it viable versus horse and buggies, you know, didn't have parking for that, you know, I mean, just to give you one example.
The other question I have before workshop, or maybe to explore more deeply into the, during the workshop, is to, to just look about, look, look into how, how the whole thing came about. Um, that's, I, I'm wondering about, about process, I come not really wondering about the nature of the developer that's been discussed in public meetings, and the timing of when the developer, when the announcement was made that the developer was close to closing on the property. Um, it's the timing of when this document came to us, and when this, when this request for the hearing came to us, because it looked like there was sort of the, the pending announcement of a done deal, and then comes in a request to amend zoning from.
No, I can, I believe the owner of the property is ready to make an application to the Village of Port Jefferson. Is that correct?
Who's the owner?
I don't, I don't know the name of the corporation.
You don't?
No, I don't.
Well, I, I understand it's, I understand it's Beechwood, and they've done other condominium complexes.
I don't know if that's the owner of the property, or is that the developer?
I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we know what the contract status is, but, you know, let's, let's, let's go back to where how this, how this originally came.
We, by the way, before you were a trustee.
Yeah.
We did have a work session with Allison LaPointe.
Yeah.
On the fact that this property was for sale, and should this board rezone the parcel at that time, we have a memo from her dated eighteen months ago.
Yeah, this is her.
So this is not a question of first impression for, for the pre-existing board members, just so it didn't like, just, you know, because the property was for sale, a lot of people weren't looking at it, and asking incoming, and asking, what can we do here, what, how, you know? And so one of the things I think that we thought would be a feature of this property that would be good for the village view, and learning from other projects where we've lost historic buildings, was that we'd like to see that the building be maintained or preserved somehow, and depending on who came along and then bought this, for what intended purpose, that's when the, you know, the, it was, we were advised at that time, that's when we, when, when this question comes before us.
I'm, I'm not questioning that, like.
It sounded like you were.
No, what I, what I'm wondering was the timing of the actual request for the hearing, the timing when the developer, when, when the.
Well, because it's just like anything else, I mean, if, if an applicant, if a, I'm going to answer your question, if somebody's ready to.
Developer was. Let me finish asking, I just wanted to ask that.
I think your question process, and I, I take offense to that, because I think you're questioning.
Well, it's not personal.
Well, I kind of feel like it is.
No, it's really about what's happening with the process, it's not, not personal at all.
Well, there is no problem, this person, the applicant hasn't made a formal application.
Right.
Okay?
And, and, but have there been discussions about it? There were, and I, and I was told by the planning department that there have been no discussions in January.
No, that was never asked of.
That's not true either.
No, that was never asked of me.
Have there been discussions about variances or, or, or zoning, and that was because Canyon could have gotten about it?
You asked me if there were any variance applications brought to the planning board.
And were there discussions, that was my follow-up question.
No, you asked me about variances, and I said no.
I asked two questions.
Can he answer the question first?
You did.
Can I have it, I think I have all of them answered.
You asked me about variances, there were no variance applications, there were also no zoning change applications.
Well, I mean, also, let me just say from.
But were there discussions, was my follow-up question.
Anybody wants, anybody wants to, before coming, a submission to the Village of Port Jefferson.
I'm sure this, sure.
We don't have to do this yet.
I'm sure, no, I'm sure there, I'm sure there are a lot of discussions, but, but yeah, so.
A lot of conversations.
Of course.
Yeah.
Laura, who, who are you accusing? You going after her, now you're going after me, you're saying that I lied to you, what is this?
I'm sorry. You know, my, my question is about process, not accusing anyone of anything.
This is the process.
With all due respect, could I call a point of order and suggest that we set a date for the work session? I don't mean, I like, this conversation can continue there, I know that Mar- uh, the mayor has a six-thirty cutoff, and I know that we all have things that we want to present to.
Fifteen more minutes, I'd love to talk about process, there is, it's often, and, you know, that people will come to us all the time with their surveys, they'll go up to Richie's Department, they'll come in and say, hey, what can we do with this lot? This is part of the conversation that, that happens, when people are looking to put a new restaurant in, we've met with twelve people who are interested in building something at the Gap, I mean, it's not uncommon, so, you know.
Correct, they just know what they're going to do, I mean, and I think that, to go back to the point about, you know, timing and process, right, so Allison LaPointe presents this, we, the board members who are on that remember this, this was in our original packet from two thousand nineteen, because Catholic Health comes and says, we're selling this property, we're shedding the Mary Haven assets, we're going to sell this property, what can we do? And they're like, well, you're in this zone, okay, we're going to knock all this down, and we're going to build Glass Tower. That would be really bad, don't do that, that's what started the process in two thousand nineteen, when Allison LaPointe made the presentation at the meeting saying, are you guys going to rezone this property, you should think about this, because the zoning on this property is really not appropriate. Like, it's not appropriate for what you're going to want on that triangle, so, do you want more office space, do you want a medical office, do you want that building demo? And it sat around, because oftentimes, these things are developer-driven, because they're who's going to drive the dollar, to a certain extent. Um, and then it became the villagers' initiative, the mayor's initiative, of engaging with Catholic Health, saying, we're going to work towards trying to save that building, and that was really, the impetus that got us to this point, to say, how can we save the building for an adaptive reuse, as opposed to putting it all into a landfill?
Well, I mean, I didn't, I didn't have conversations with the Catholic Diocese over that.
Right, no, no, but, but property.
I mean, I think the board had said, you know, if anything of value would be, we would love to see that building safe at the time that we have these discussions, but we're not going to dictate, the office space right now, there's, it's hard to find anybody who wants office space, so I said, let the market find out who wants to pay sixteen million dollars, or whatever the price point was on it at that point in time. And, um, twenty million, or whatever it was, so we're like, you know, and then when that, when they make, when they've struck their bargain, you know, we have to then come, come back, and if, they have every right to take that building down, I would really, I don't know, that's my feeling, I would prefer not to see the building come down, if we can help put something that's really meaningful for this community together and save a building, I think, you know, and that, and there's already a mechanism in the code for them to come and ask us for this, that's, it already exists there, so they're.
No, I did ask for the, um, I did ask for documentation on the, the conversations and the, and the, um.
I don't know, they, they, they found it.
What, do you know what I, so I've, I've asked the building and planning department for records of those interactions, just to gain knowledge about this, and.
Do, do you keep records of what?
Use it as a FOI request.
I had to, I said, if it's required to be foiled, if I need, if this needs to be a, a foil, please consider this a foil, I'm just asking for it, and, and then I got the, um, response five days later, saying that we acknowledge, and we will respond to you within twenty days, so they're treating it like it's a FOI request.
Rich, were you on vacation last week?
I just got back yesterday, I was gone for a week and a half, I'm going through everything for you, you submit a FOI request, I'm going to get it all for you, I haven't had a chance today.
So, I, and, and, you know, we set a public hearing.
Are you okay? What, um, what did you just say? Tell me.
Huh?
Say, can you repeat what you just said? I don't think I heard it.
I said, I got your FOI request, I haven't had a chance today, I'm getting the documents for you, I was gone for a week and a half, I left a day after you submitted your FOI request.
So in the, uh.
It's okay.
The answer to the question is that the, what, review FOI officer law, you have five days to respond, and any day of days from the date of response to fulfill the, so I said, just meet, you know, meet your requirement, and we're good.
Yeah, twenty days, yep.
Right, I mean, so, I, you know, I think, everybody, like, I, I really don't know what we're talking about, for me, you know what I mean, like, I got, I got, I got a draft E, uh, AEIF, environmental impact statement, I got a draft of this, and all I, all I saw on a sheet was all cross-outs and everything, and I'm confused, so I want to know. And I, if I'm confused, I know it's complicated, and I don't mean any disrespect, but it is, I'm understanding that in the PO, you can have a conditional use that points to the RM.
Correct.
That is confusing, and what we're trying to do is straighten that mess up, that's, that's.
Right, and, and as, correct, and as opposed to allowing just a straight vanilla, run-of-the-mill multifamily development, which can be done as a conditional use in the PO, right? You point, it points over to the RM as a conditional use, and allow multifamily.
Aye.
And we will have a beautiful condo project there.
And no historic building.
And no historic building.
Right.
That's the concern, if that's not a, I'm not saying it's a priority, not a priority, but that's the, that's the concern that this is trying to address, and that's why we put the preface in to say, which, you know, some developers don't like it, some don't, it doesn't matter, because it's the policy of the Village of Port Jefferson, hopefully, if this board adopts it, to preserve the historic building that's on it, and encourage its adaptive reuse, as opposed to demolition. That's the goal.
I'm with trustee Casay, and let's, let's continue talking through the work session, if that's okay?
So you want a field trip, Laura?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Yeah, I, I almost walked the property yesterday, so I'm open gate, and I'm like, is it, I don't want Raymond to come out of the article, trustee.
Did I see that? Did I see that on a record? No.
What?
No, he said, I didn't go, it didn't, there was.
There was just one other thing, and, and I appreciate the documents that you sent yesterday, Mr. Harris, um, which were the designs from the engineering company that created four different, um, concepts of the, um, development, right? My, that was, I guess, the date, it was dated in February, so it was interesting to see those, those concepts, and I know they're not, um, approved, or they haven't been presented, or anything, but, again, that, that, they were back in February, and I don't know if they, if the.
Can I just, can I put, how many times did you meet with Conifer before they made a formal application? Two years?
Since before I even worked in the building department.
Right, it's not uncommon for this kind of, how do we make our application work with the Village of Port Jefferson, and that to go back and forth with the department in a fluid way before a formal application is submitted?
That's all, I understood, that's okay, but I'm just thinking about the timeline and the, and the process.
It also has to be done with, it would usually be done with the department head, and the department, or even one or two trustees, it can't come before an entire board, because then you have, you have public meetings taking place, unadvertised public meeting, that's why it's done with the department itself.
Well, I mean, to fill in the, the blanks on that, really, you could start two thousand nineteen, when they alerted us they were going to shed that property, then I think it really accelerates, it goes through, this board hits the alarm bells, two, a year after that, when it gets actively marketed with a national realtor, uh, it's listed for sale on uses. Um, then it does sit for a while, as this board, or, and plant staff considers what might happen on that property, uh, and then, obviously, it accelerates when there's a notification that this property is going into contract, or is immediately in contract, and we are going to develop this contract, we're going to develop this based on the zoning that's in place. Now, also remember, for timing-wise, New York is a rule, uh, New York is a law-of-the-day state, so what does that mean? I know, this is getting way far afield from where we're going to go, but it does fill in kind of the blanks on the timing, so, New York is a law-of-the-day state, meaning that if, um, an application comes in, and zoning is in place, but then zoning is changed before a decision is made? The law of the, of, on the decision is get, gets applied, not the application, so, there is no race to the finish line, that, they say, oh, I'm going to get an application in, this is just, get an application in, then the board of trustees hasn't acted on it, wakes up and says, whoa, I better change this to save the building, and then if we don't pass it, they don't get a pass saying, oh, well, I'm, I'm already in the process. Very famous case, the Tonnerberg Haven versus Rocky Point, um, drive-in, same thing, they, and, and what we don't want to do is, my advice through this whole process, I think Chris is managing very well, you don't want a developer to spend too much money, because then they leave that development money on the table, and that development money can go towards asbestos abatement, or towards other things that are in historic buildings. And if they go through the process, and then this board decides to change the rules, they've now spent all the time in front of the planning board, they've spent engineering, they've spent environmental, they've spent IDA applications, they've gone through all the process, to have the rug pulled out from underneath them. And, and you always want to be, my recommendation is to a board of trustees, to be in front of that process ahead of time, which provokes potentially draft applications, can this work, does this work, what about this, what if I turn it upside down like this? What about this? What if I turn it upside down like this? And that's, that I think is, that's, the ideal process is, draft the zoning that this board wants to see, and make the developers work to that standard, which goes back to trustee Casse's point about, right, potentially for clearing, you know? And then you'll have to see what's on the property, whether it's actually really a revegetation, but that's a discussion for the planning board.
Just one more comment, I appreciate that explanation very much. Just would have loved to have that before we voted on opening it up for a public hearing, so that we all kind of understood the entirety of the concept. So, that would be my only, like, what could we have done differently, kind of thing.
Okay, well, I sent you the handbook, you know, which showed, which talked about adopting.
It's just this particular circumstance.
Isn't a public hearing so we can gather more information, and the law that can gather more information?
Yeah, a public hearing is for the debate for the change, but I think that's just, you know, yeah.
And the vote for the change.
Potentially, or not, right. If you're not, you know, everyone always has to write the vote down.
Will Barbara set a work session? If the mayor.
Is there a date and time?
Next Tuesday, Thursday is, when I did the interviews, Tuesday morning, Thursday afternoon. Just looking at your schedule, yeah, on my calendar.
I can do the 25th, I can do the 27th.
The 25th, that's when the interviews are, at, in the morning.
You're looking at my schedule without you telling me, right?
No, I'm saying, on my village calendar, for you, Tuesday mornings and Thursday afternoons for next week, I booked.
For me?
You're not, you don't, you're not sitting in on that?
No.
Okay, then you're good. But Cathy Anne is busy.
So it is Tuesday afternoon, Tuesday afternoon then does not have interviews on it?
The 25th?
Yeah.
Tuesday, 25th?
Yeah, I can be there, I can do any time between 1:00 and 5:00.
This is for a work session?
A work session.
To go take a field trip. Field trip.
Oh.
Both? I don't know what your, what your schedule.
You know, they're gonna request for field trips.
A work session.
Probably open, can you go take a look at it any time, or you're not allowed to?
Newspaper man here?
The gate is open.
Can't really say.
Rich, could you?
I'm giving everyone advice.
I can contact the developer, and find who the owner is, and see if we can get his permission to get inside there. I wouldn't recommend just walking on there, it could be spring guns in place, for all I know. I'll find out.
That's good legal advice.
So, are we scheduling the work session then?
So, I think that before we get to, is there a desire to go tour the site before the work session? Show hands. Is that a yes?
Yes, I mean, I, I would like to go to the site, but I think the priority is getting a work session in everyone's calendar, so that we can sit and actually have debate about this, and whether we.
Okay, so we're available on the 25th afternoon from 1:00 to 5:00 for work session.
Cathy Anne, is that clear for the interview schedule?
Interview, I have a morning, but I do have a hard 3:15.
So, should we say 1:00 or 1:30?
That's fine with me.
You have what, a 3:15?
3:15.
Okay.
We'll do a.
We can do a 1.
We could do 1 to 3:15.
1:00 on the 25th, Rich, can you please get back to us and see if the owner of the property can make it available at any point in time? Give us, give us some options, connect maybe with the people who'd like to take the tour, let us know when the property would like to be available.
Do you want it to be open to people, other than the board?
No.
No, just the board trustees, so. Um, you know, the 20.
Not on site, no.
The 24th?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'd have concerns.
24th?
Yes, I'm available.
Rebecca, are you available the 24th?
The 24th, for, uh.
The tour?
Yes.
Okay, so see if they can make arrangements for us to gain access on the 24th, let us know.
Monday, 24th, between, if you say 1.
You know, let us know if they can get us in, and we'll, we'll try. I mean, just, you know, the better answer would be, yes, we can make it available for you, when would you like to come?
I don't think it's gonna be difficult.
No, so, and then that way we get a lay of the land, we can walk it, I actually would like to actually see the building firsthand myself, I understand it's, it's a really.
I used to play C Y O basketball in there.
Cool.
True.
1:00, and then we'll compete 1:00 on the 25th for work session?
Yep, that's exactly.
It's Saturday here.
Thank you for. Okay, ma'am, you have to.
Don't do it that way. Because I'm not going to the conference.
So, do we have a work session scheduled for the 25th?
I have 7:00.
1:00, 1:00 on the 25th, site visit on the 24th.
Is there any other reports you guys wanna share? And I need, I have travel time too, so I figured we'd all be done by 6:00. Do you want to join the meeting? Hold on.
25th.
Couple of important things.
2.
Cathy Anne?
Cathy Anne has to leave 3:15, so. 2:00?
Yeah.
Okay. We're changing the time of the work session until 2:00, because Brian can't get here until 2:00.
Yeah.
On, on Tuesday, the 25th.
How much time do you do?
I'll, I'll send an email out. 24th for a site visit, you're gonna work on that.
The 25th at 2:00.
2:00.
So, board reports, does anybody have anything for?
I do. I have two very important things to discuss, alright, Rebecca, go ahead. Thank you. The first is the discussion, to continue the discussion that the board is having about creating a task force of residents to look at election issues, that the, you know, the board, we, you know, so we decided to put in the hands of a resident task force. A call was put out to residents, it was announced at the civic meeting, which all of us were independents as, as residents. And it was announced in the E report, I think many of us have had residents come forward, showing interest in being on this task force. And so, I think going ahead and galvanizing that, that task force, and saying, go, go forth and look at the issues of term length for the trustees, and term length for the mayor, term limits, election month, whether to keep it in June or go to March, and if it's going to, it's being kept in June, then addressing the hand counting versus voting machines. So, if we can form that, it was suggested, trustee Sheprow suggested to have the village clerk, or I suggest maybe Mary, be the liaison to this task force, as, again, so that none of the board of trustees are directly involved. I don't know if it's something viable.
I think it'd be important to have, definitely, a liaison that's not a sitting trustee, but also to have somebody, or at least she can bring questions back, there are so many intricacies to this, all these issues that you mentioned, and election law. And I think, you know, there, there's been questions that I even brought to Barbara at one point, that I read in ICOM, but that's not the standard practice, but then is it still being able to be used, like, having a November election, when I read in ICOM, said that you can have a November election with the general election, but that's not done in villages.
Correct.
So, even I have all these questions, so just, you know, my concern is that you have them all come to some consensus on what they wanna see, and then find out, well, that's not legally possible, and then that time is wasted, so, obviously, we can't have the attorney attend those meetings, so, what do you guys think, and who would be the best person to, you know, bring those questions to the attorney? If it would be Mary, or, you know, I'm open to all kinds of suggestions.
Yeah, and I think that's a really great point, Cathy Anne, and have, maybe, at each meeting, you know, the, the task force will write up minutes, and then we just run those by the attorney, to make sure that they're on the right track, or, hey, here's a red flag here, or, you know, whatever is, you know, on the right track legally, you know, within the bounds of.
I think that's fine, I, I, I think that's a good process. You know, I, I shared a concern of having, having the village administrator there, who runs the elections, is different than having the village attorney there, because then the village attorney's gonna dominate the discussion, so you wanna germinate some of these thoughts, so. But there are, the election law lays out bumpers on both sides, on what's legal and what's not. So, yeah, if they're having that discussion, it shouldn't really, it's not a very heavy docket. If they come to, like, a conclusion that they wanna check whether it's legal or not, I'm happy to review that.
Lauren, what do you think?
We're working on trying to get the document, the process document from the village of Southampton, as they went through this. They had a panel that went through this process.
That was from the article that circulated?
Correct, thank you.
As a former Southampton village attorney?
Luckily.
Yes.
So, yeah, so maybe we can use that document as sort of a guide to help look for best practices, or, you know, look at things that maybe we don't agree with, or we, the, the panel doesn't necessarily agree with or agrees with, and actually really looking at it independently, and taking it, and, because there's a lot of smart people in, in the village. More, you know, people are smarter than I think anybody realizes, and have great project management skills, and project completion skills, and I think we can let them go, and not worry about what, what's in there, and what's not in there, because I think they're gonna do their, their homework, I think they're gonna do their due diligence, and make sure that it's done right, and then come back with recommendations that they feel are most appropriate for, for Port Jefferson.
Okay, so do, do we maybe feel that there is not the need to have a staff liaison at meetings? Because coordination is, is just a nightmare for everyone, and I know our staff is overtaxed already, but if they, if that, by Laura and your estimation, and I agree that, that you, you know, that people who are going to serve on that committee, you know, they have project management skills, if they're internally agreeing to someone to take minutes, and then those minutes are just sent directly to the attorneys, then there doesn't have to be a middle person to.
Maybe if I can make a recommendation, just based on the Southampton experience. It's kind, along, along the lines of trustee Sheprow's point, it's kind of organic, it does grow on its own based on the appointment. So what I might recommend is, you make the appointments, have them select either, the board can decide to select the chairperson, or have the, or have the committee select it, whichever you want, whichever, I'm sure there'll be a candidate that will be, you know, frontrunner. Have them do it, and then see what happens after the first meeting. If they need that kind of professional assistance, then they'll, they'll request it and get it. If they feel that they're on the path and know what their mission is, which is always, which is the major issue with Southampton, you have to know what the mission is, I think you articulated on the record tonight, which is, which I'm very glad I wrote down. Once they have the mission, then they'll know where to go.
Excellent.
So I think, I think see what happens.
So, my last question to everyone would be, who would be officially appointing these?
The board.
The board, all of us. Okay, so, so why don't we all circulate any email inquiries that we've received from residents, and, and names, and then gather those, and, and start, start this up?
Stan, you have any thoughts? That you care to share with us?
He's got thoughts.
Yeah? You agree with that?
My last point I would just make on that, and advice is smaller and odd.
Yeah.
Because if it gets too large, you know, what they say about, you know, how people.
Did you just call our residents odd?
Yeah. The odder the better. I'll be these election days, odder the better, yes.
Too small and odd.
Yes, yes, yes.
I was, just one more thing, and I'm thinking that if they're organ, if they organically reach down to us and said, and said, I want to be a part of this, good. I am not reaching out or putting any, and I know the civics did, or is, or will, or may, but as a trustee, I am not hand-selecting or recommending any representation on that, on that panel.
No, and that, none of us, sorry, I think after it being in the E report, which is an independent, you know, body, and then having these discussions, we've, you know, and I've, I've received an email, you know, from industry resident, I think both of you, you say you have as well, maybe Stan has too.
Well, would it be aligned to recommend the size of this committee?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think what I would say is, why don't you first circulate the, the names amongst each other? I don't know if I necessarily disqualify myself, if I saw somebody who was an expert that jumped out at me and did not, and said, you know what? Like, a professor of political science, you know, you'd be a good voice on this. So I, I don't necessarily think I would disqualify somebody because they didn't apply, but you know that woman has, or man has a good experience. So, I, I would just say, why don't you circulate what that number looks like, circulate your candidates. And then if you need to, come to a consensus, and if you can't, do ranked voting, you know, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, whoever gets the most points gets on the board. And say whether it's 5, 7.
I don't think we have a list of, you know, too many right now, that I, knocking on the door, so I think.
Yeah.
I also think that maybe some panelists who have come forward might be able to recruit.
Correct. And say, this is the person, but the, the board's gotta appoint it, so, I, I think, circulate the number amongst, amongst yourselves, circulate the candidates, I should say, say who this is who's expressed interest, and this is also who I would recommend, just additional people to add to the list, then when that comes to a number, 5, 7, whatever.
And maybe Raymond, I know the paper this Thursday goes out to all the residents, maybe that's a good place that you can let them know where, who to, you know, contact one of the trustees if you're interested in being on this committee, that would be a good way to get the word out.
And then, yeah, and then whatever names we get, you know, from, between, you know, the names we already have, and then up through the next board meeting, when we would be.
Two weeks.
Making the appointments.
Yep, I would plan to do it then.
Yeah, perfect, okay, excellent, thank you all for that discussion. Speaking of committees, I know I've spoken to some of you about this, the concept of creating a Port Jefferson Village Tree Committee. This is something that I've been researching for a while, in light of having, been working on different tree issues in the village, in sort of little, little silos, and saying to myself, like, there's gotta be a better way, and there is. By, you know, so I, I looked at there is such thing as a tree committee, and it looks like, you know, dozens and dozens of villages in New York State have tree committees. They are groups of individuals devoted to processing and understanding the complexities that go into decisions made around tree maintenance, tree removal, and tree planting. You know, proper planting of the trees, so that it's not, you know, you don't have an oak under power lines, and you don't have, you know, willow over a sewer line that's gonna be disruptive. And having this body of residents assisting our building and planning department, assisting D P W in making recommendations, you know, taking the time that, again, our, our overtaxed staff, who does an amazing job at everything that they do, being able to have a body like the A R C, giving recommendations, you know, doing the footwork and giving recommendations, in the effort to help maintain a healthy urban canopy here in the village, and, and to start seeing the placement of new trees along village streets, which helps with our stormwater issue, as well as it's been proven to increase property values, to have a, you know, a tree-lined streets, to have, to have those there, so, wanted to bring this up at a meeting, I believe that would have to be codified, to, to create a committee?
Well, you could, you could create one by resolution.
Okay.
But, just like you did with the, the, the election task force, but that's why I was just looking into code, because we do have a tree grading and land clearing chapter. There are roles in that for the planning board, as well as the, the building inspector, with regard to our trees. So, I would just suggest that we, the committee, just be cognizant of what that chapter is going to be when you create the mission statement. But if you create a mission statement and do a resolution, you could, you could appoint that by resolution if you needed to.
Okay, very good, I appreciate that, so, you know, if the board's comfortable, I can draft something to bring to the main first meeting, to, to look at, you know, look at that, make sure that a mission statement is in line with what's currently in the code.
There is also something called a conservation advisory council.
Yes, and the liaison to that, and the, the understanding I have of the tree committee versus the C A C, is that the C A C, which I understand well, looks at large scope projects, you know, environmental issues, it could be anything from single-use plastics, which, you know, is an issue they're looking at, to, you know, looking at the, the stormwater and flooding issues, to, you know, other environmental efforts. Trees, as simple as they may seem, are, you know, I found in, in my tenure on this board, and before this board, take a huge amount of mindfulness by either an individual or a small group of people to properly manage. And again, I'm not suggesting anything negative about our, our staff, or, or the C A C, but I have spoken to chairs of other tree committees, who have said that this is, this as a, as a broken-up effort, environmental effort, is something that's very effective, as opposed to lumping it in with another committee's tasks.
Can and should the tree committee be a subcommittee of the C A C?
Then you're limited to the C A C members who already have things on their plate that they're volunteering to looking to for the village, and that, you know, again, it's, you're, we'd be looking for people who are willing to devote time and go do site visits, and go, you know, really work on, on individual, you know, placements of trees, and this and that, looking into where the power lines are, and where the underground utilities are, it's, it's time-consuming to do right. And I've just found in my, my capacity as an individual, and even working with the volunteers that have stepped forth and said, you know, they'll help with these things in the village, not having that under a structured umbrella of, you know, this is, like, this is the task, and this is what we all understand, it's just, it's been not as fruitful as, as one would hope, as opposed to having a more organized. as fruitful as, as one would hope as opposed to having a more organized effort.
So, just one other thing to think about, I don't want to burden it with ministerial things, but chapter 241 does talk about, does have a defined role of the CAC in there as well. So, just, you know, if, if the committee stays within its lane, and maybe even as advisory capacity, the CAC will be fine. If it starts to go a little bit afar from that, maybe we'll want to codify this. If it gets more, if that committee gets more legs under it, and potentially amend the code to reflect the tree committee's roles.
Roots.
Run roots, right?
Excellent. All right, well, I'll, I'll do that research in a minute.
From small courts.
And, and those are, those are the major things. I want to thank you for, for the discussions. Otherwise, you all know the climate resilience presentation's available on Port Jeff YouTube, and we need more people to fill out that survey, so looking for those survey responses by May 6. And then there was a change, the Arbor Day tree giveaway, the DEC is delayed in their delivery of the trees, so it's not going to be at the farmer's market this Sunday. I'm going to be speaking to the Historical Society about potentially hooking up with Antique and Garden Weekend instead at the following weekend, or else I'm going to have hundreds of trees in my basement, so I'm trying to keep them alive. So, that is that update. And I met with a member of the Swaseg Garden Club at the Beach Street Parkland to just discuss the potential of extending the pollinator garden there along the guard rail, and just wanted to get sort of the thumbs up or thumbs down on continuing a conversation about that.
Can you repeat that last one?
Sure, so a member of the Swaseg Garden Club reached out and asked if the village would be amenable to helping collaborate for them to work on a pollinator garden along the guard rail there, which is currently just through grass, to help beautify the parkland, something that I'd be happy for additional input. You know, we talked about potentially collaborating with the environmental club at the school, as well as, there was another entity that we're excited, like Audubon, you know, it couldn't make a community project about it, but because it's Village Parkland, I wanted to bring it to the board before we continue the conversation. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you. Lauren, I know you have to go. Did you end it?
Yes, just really quick, and on the same, along the same lines that Rebecca was just talking about establishing a committee, and I know we, we forestalled this process in looking at the code changes, zoning changes for long-term, so she's, are you leaving, Rebecca?
No.
She's recusing herself, good girl. About the zoning for long-term, short-term rentals, and bed breakfast, and Airbnb. So, we were at the civics meeting this last week, and it was brought up again that we really need to look at that code, and so I wondered if this board has the tolerance and the appetite for establishing or agreeing to sort of putting forward a task force made up of community members who are, were impacted by this thing, to sort of study it, come back, report on it, and then that would really help us inform a different, in a different process that how we, how we're going to look at that code zoning.
Yeah, so...
I was just going to say, aren't we kind of at the, wouldn't that be going backwards at this point?
Yes. A little bit. But with the understanding that the trustee who was involved in the original process was impacting maybe the way that the code was written, and had to recuse, so, or was then recused. So, this is like, is going back, because there still is, the, the code that was drafted and redrafted or agreed, redlined, there still was no real understanding from residents about what the real issues are. We heard from the trustee, but the trustee owns a business in the village that will be, or potentially may be impacted by the code.
What was the outcome of that? She recused herself now, but what was the outcome of that?
It was forestalled.
It aborted the public hearing.
The process did, but was there, there were some questions about the legitimacy of her being involved. Was there an outcome through NICOM?
Yeah, no, that was resolved, that there was, as long as the recusal happened, NICOM was fine with it, and that was the, their opinion on it. The, so, so what happened was that the objection was made, NICOM cleared it, and then...
When you say NICOM cleared it, cleared and...
There was, they didn't sustain it.
Found it or...
Yeah, they didn't sustain it. So, now...
So, she doesn't have to recuse then?
Well, she does have to recuse ultimately for the public hearing, but in the drafting and contributions was not, NICOM didn't feel that it was...
Got it, okay.
...objectionable.
Got it.
So, the, the, I guess the question becomes, you know, there is a work product that was there, and there was a completed work product. Do you not want to work, you not want to adopt that work product, or is the concept to restart it and start from the beginning?
The concept is to sort of bring in an objective group who are impacted by this and have their opinions about it and...
Wouldn't they be a public hearing?
You know, so here's, here's the concern with that. Like, delegating legislation to a working group is a difficult thing to do, because then you're going to get to, you know, did you get landlords who have Airbnbs? Did you get neighbors from Airbnbs? Like, you know, it becomes a, it becomes more of a form of a public hearing as opposed to a real, so maybe, maybe the, I mean, again, we're just talking a lot about this, but maybe the concept is we, we circulate the draft of the local law, have a public hearing, listen to the opinions on whether it goes far enough, doesn't go far enough, went too far, should be scrapped, should be adopted, should ban all rentals, I don't know, you know, who knows where a public hearing goes, but have the public hearing, advertise it, allow everyone to come.
Okay.
That would be the process. We talked about process earlier, that would be a proper process...
Yeah.
...to hear from the public on such a legislation.
As opposed to an appointed committee, because inevitably someone's going to be left off the committee.
So, I'm following, I'm following along with you. I wonder if we can sort of step back, think about it, and re-review what NICOM responded, how NICOM responded, because I think I might have read that differently than you, I might have. I haven't read the, the response, the insight, not in a couple of months, so I'd like to revisit that with you. Maybe we do that in, at the next, if we can, put it on the agenda for the next meeting and cut, or the next work session.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be yes or no. I mean, I, I remember what they said precisely, they were just saying, "Look, when you participated in it, just recuse."
It was, I have to read it again.
Okay.
I, I read it a little differently than that, so I, I might have read it wrong, but I'll go take a look at it again and, and stand down on this request until I have a chance to really...
Yeah, and what I would say is, you know, I, I might say, get the local law where it was before. If, if you're talking to people...
It's a hard treat.
Yeah.
And so many redlines. It's just, it was just confusing, I think, to what the 25015 was for Marmo looking at the red lines.
I hope not. And 25015 was pretty clear, I hope not.
It was pretty clear, I mean, but she saw the red lines.
You got to see multiple sections, yeah.
Yeah, so...
But let me ask, Rich, how close are you, did you have a final version close to local here? Was, right? Okay, so why don't you cer, why don't you email that to me? I'll circulate, or email to Barbara, we'll circulate to the board.
I'd really like to move this forward. We were derailed when this ethical concern came up, the public hearing was stopped. Since that time, as the administrator of these ordinances, I have rentals taking place on a short, short-term basis, complaints coming in all the time, and I do not have the tools to prosecute them. I get complaints constantly, and we were ready to go, just with the rental law, the 205, that got stopped as well. I'm, I'm almost begging for this to come forward. I drafted it based upon my experience prosecuting this exact code that I put forward with tweaks for nearly seven years.
So, so let's, let's do this. If you got, if you got it drafted in a final version, let's circulate the final version, we'll review it.
Had we advertised in the public hearing last time?
We did not.
We were setting it.
Yeah, the work session produced a final document.
We had two, there were two versions of two codes. One, that was the B&amp;B, which was going to burn to include Airbnbs, and the second was the rental part itself.
Yep, let's circulate that. Okay.
And I'll take, I'll revisit the, the response from Rich on Mancini.
Yeah, if it's not clear enough to you, call me.
Okay. Yes, I will. Thank you. And then the, the voting machine question, which I don't know if it's just worth bringing up here again and, or having a, well, Rebecca can come back, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
What time do we start?
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. We just wanted to touch quickly on the voting machine issue again, and, you know, Brian was very comprehensive in his response about things that the law suggests and might mean and that kind of thing. So, I indicated in an email exchange that I think everybody sitting at this table, this, this board was privy to, and Clark, I think, also was caught on it, as was the treasurer. That I, I, I agree as to the feeling of the board, if the board has no tolerance for voting machines this year because of our village attorney's recommendation, then I, I stand down on that. I still think that voting machines are legitimate resources for counting election votes, because we've been using them for a very long time, and we, those machines are used in multiple elections throughout the village and the, and the island, and two villages are actually using them in the June 20th election, so, and they're renting them. So, the chain of custody...
The Board of Elections was surprised at that.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so, so, you know, it's not, it's not a question about the integrity of machines, it's a question about whether the election law would allow us to do it. And the election law is very clear that it does not, and NICOM is very clear that it does not. So, it's not, we love the machines, I want the machines. Maybe by some miracle of the election calendar, there is no June primary. That is a, by the way, I'm saying that I allow, that could be a, that is a major moonshot, but if there is no primary, the Suffolk County Board of Elections will let their machines be available to us. We're, we're good to go. Barbara, has a nice evening. If it does not, we have to go back to what the election law says, and NICOM says, for those villages not using scanner ballot voting machines, the only other available option is to conduct the election by hand counting paper ballots. That's from NICOM's handbook. So, I would love to have the machines, I, I just hope we don't have a primary, but the Suffolk County Board of Elections says their machines are not available.
Right.
And if the Suffolk County Board of Elections says their machines are not available, the election law then comes back to, "We can't get them from anywhere else but the Suffolk County Board of Elections." So, and the commissioners agree with that. So, that's the law. It's not really subject to interpretation, and it's crystal clear. But if we have the machines, great, if we, from the, from the Board of Elections. If we don't have them from the Board of Elections, Barbara's going to get her little thumb counter out.
Barbara is a machine.
Right. We have our own machine. La machine.
Are you sure Southampton used the machines last year too?
I, I wouldn't want to start to name villages who may be a violation of the election law, but I'm happy to have that reported, but yeah, that's, you know, they'll, it's crystal clear. It's crystal clear that the machines, as the village may not maintain custody of ballot scanners, villages must rent them from the county board of elections, and the commissioner said, "We are not renting them to you." Period. And it was a good, it was a, I, I think where this started was it was a good intention to try to obtain machines. It was a nice strategy, it was a good thought, it was problem-solving for staff. Unfortunately, the law, and especially the election law in New York, is extraordinarily Byzantine and not necessarily logical, but...
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Trustee Lacks, anything for us tonight?
I have to go, I'm so sorry.
That's it?
I'm so sorry. You want to come with me?
Dropping like flies here. All right, guys, last one, let's pull this up. You have nothing?
Oh, I gave my...
Your dinner's served. Your, the pond?
He's got a CC of a six.
All right, I will be very quick. Code negotiations are almost wrapping up.
They can't lose anyone.
Almost dish, almost dish.
Another whole day, but we're getting there. And one thing that's, that's interesting to bring up in fun and light is we're proposing, and we're, will be, with the ARC, be proposing a mural code in conjunction with the sign code. We're in favor of them, we love them, we just want to have some, we, being the ARC, have some kind of...
So, please, can you not go in the meeting?
Pay to use your work control, but some sort of regulation on where and how many and, you know, to what extent, and, and then how it kind of overlaps with signage, and can there be words, and, you know, if you already have a storefront sign, can you then have a mural that also has the name of the business, et cetera? So, we have somebody internally on the ARC that's made some, done some research at different villages and how they handle the mural codes, and the ARC's looking at that, and then we'll be presenting it at some point, I will on their behalf. And good news, the dog water fountain is in over at the park, so...
Cool.
Yay. Have it ready for Port Paws, and the training session is continuing to go on there with some good feedback from the dog training. So, I'll just keep it light and leave the rest of the heavy stuff out. Unless anybody has any questions for me about anything going on?
I, I love ending with dogs. Dogs.
Great.
Make a motion, make a motion.
I make a motion too. We voted on everything else already, right?
Yes, we did.
The motion closed the work session.
Yes. No, to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Uh-huh. Where am I? You put these...
Third and fourth.